Where is that?
Welcome, everybody, to the regularly scheduled Farmington Hills City Council meeting of March 13th, 2023. I'm so glad you're here. If you would like to speak on anything that is not on the agenda, you can come up during public question and comments, and I'll limit you to five minutes, and I'll stick my hand up at 30 seconds. Okay, Pam, just for you. Okay, 30 seconds. And if you want to speak on anything that is on the agenda, there are blue slips in the back on the wall toward the entrance to the council chambers, and just fill out a blue slip, put what number it is on the agenda, and I will make sure we call you up when it's appropriate. So, as we begin, we will now start out with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three years ago, we were doing that virtually for this time. Next item is the roll call.
Mayor Barnett.
Here.
Council members Bridges.
Here.
Bruce.
Here.
Noel.
Here.
Massey.
Here.
Newland.
Here.
And I'll note that Councilmember Bolowares absent.
Yes. Next item is the approval of the regular session meeting agenda. Dr. Massey?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I would move approval of the agenda as published, or?
It's been moved by Dr. Massey, seconded by Councilmember Bridges. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Next is the proclamation recognizing March 2023 as Women's History Month. Mary Ellen Newland, would you like to read that into the record? We have several people that will be picking them up.
Thank you, Mayor. Proclamation for Women's History Month, March 2023. Whereas through history, extraordinary women of every race, class, ethnicity, and social economic background have made significant contributions to our nation in countless ways, both recorded and unrecorded. And whereas through leadership, ingenuity, and hard work, generations of women have made significant contributions in science, medicine, technology, business, politics, entrepreneurship, arts and culture, and the military. And whereas women worked to secure their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity and played vital roles in abolishment, emancipation, civil rights, and industrial labor movements as a work to create a more just and fair society for all. And whereas women played critical economic, cultural, and social roles in our society and constitute a significant portion of their labor force, working both inside and outside the home. And whereas, as we venture into the future, gender will no longer, will be no obstacle to what women can accomplish as they open new doors, embrace innovation ideas, and continue to create a profound and positive impact on our society. Now therefore, be it resolved that Vicky Barnett, Mayor of Farmington Hills, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim March 2023 as Women's History Month and call upon our citizens, public, and private institutions, businesses, and schools to celebrate the history and achievements of countless women who have helped to promote a more equitable society and created possibilities for generations of women to come.
Thank you. I understand we have several people who are coming up to receive these.
On behalf of all of us, we would like to thank the Mayor, City Council, and Farmington Hills Fire Department for this proclamation. We are grateful to work for such a supportive department, and we are honored to set an example for generations of women to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank the Mayor, City Council, the City Manager, and Chief King for acknowledging and encouraging us women to continue to be leaders within our agencies. I'd also like to acknowledge the 14 other women that work with me at the Farmington Hills Police Department. They also deserve recognition for this great achievement that we are women, and we continue to work hard to provide for our families and to prove that we can do just as good. And lastly, I would just like to say that we are gratefully taking this proclamation with gratitude, and we appreciate everything you guys do to support us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item is proclamation recognizing March 19 through 25, 2023, as Severe Weather Awareness Week. Ms. Noel, could you read that one for us?
Sure.
Recognizing the women on the council.
Whereas Governor Gretchen Whitmer and Oakland County Executive David Coulter have declared the week of March 19 through the 25th, 2023, a severe weather awareness week in Michigan. And whereas, the Oakland County Homeland Security Division will engage in public education efforts during Severe Weather Awareness Week to help minimize the loss of life, destruction of property, and disruption of daily activities that can result from severe weather, including tornadoes, flooding, high winds, and other weather patterns. And whereas, to further raise the awareness level of severe weather safety and to promote tornado safety preparedness, Oakland County will conduct a special test of its outdoor warning system sirens on Wednesday, March 22, 2023, at 1:00 p.m. Now therefore, be it resolved that Vicky Barnett, Mayor of the City of Farmington Hills, on behalf of the City Council, does hereby proclaim March 19 through the 25th, 2023, as Severe Weather Awareness Week in Farmington Hills, and encourages all residents, schools, and businesses to test their severe weather action plans to ensure the safety of everyone in our community.
Thank you very much. And we have Lieutenant Jamie Neufeld here to receive the proclamation. I could have walked it down to you.
Thank you. Might I say a few words?
No, not at all.
Thank you very much, Mayor, City Council, Leadership Team, and those who are watching. We appreciate the support. I think everybody here knows that we have an excellent emergency management team and response team in the city. We've proven that over the years because, as we know, Mother Nature is a feisty one, and every year she throws something different at us. This year, it's been the snow and the ice, previously high winds, you know, flooding. So, just want you to know that you're in good hands with the folks who are running the city. Like I said, we've proven that. And we want to push that down so that we're prepared, you know, throughout the whole city, all the way down through the citizens. So, we encourage the citizens to take part in a lot of the drills that go on, to educate themselves, to know the difference between a watch, which is that the weather, severe weather is possible, versus a warning where we know that the severe weather is present and imminent, and to know when to take cover. That outdoor warnings, sirens, are just that. Those are for when you are outdoors, just things like that. Oakland County Emergency Management is putting on some SkyWarn classes, so we would like to encourage the citizens to attend those. About an hour and a half of your time. The two remaining dates are April 13th, from 7 to 9, and May 11th, from 7 to 9, at Addison Oaks, I believe it is, Waterford Oaks, at Waterford Oaks. So, encourage people to, you know, get some education on what severe weather looks like when it's coming in. And with that, I could go on and on, but I will not. I appreciate your support, and let's hope that this is another good year for weather. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And for people who are interested, I know that we had a very unfortunate fire incident yesterday. When the power goes out, you want people to have smoke detectors and CO2 detectors in their houses, and you will provide those to people who need them, correct?
Absolutely. Yeah, so, like I said, how much time do you want to give me on the microphone? I'll make my chief nervous and all that, but, you know, community risk reduction, definitely. You know, we want you to be prepared, you know, with the smoke alarms and with the CO detectors, and definitely, you know, and it's a good year to check for sure because they were probably on battery power for about a week or two for the last month. So, the spring forward was certainly a good time to check them. We recommend that you get a 10-year sealed lithium-ion battery sealed detector. That way, you know, people aren't removing the batteries, and that way, when it does beep at the end of its existence, its life, you take it down and replace it.
Thank you.
A lot of people think that when you put the battery in and you push the button, that it works. That means that the alarm works. It doesn't necessarily mean the detector works. So, when that expires after 10 years, so... Yes, we do, we recommend that. And I'm going to stop now, otherwise, you know, we'll be doing this.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And now we'll move on to the Oakland County Treasurer's Prevention Information, and I know I have that somewhere. I know who I have it. I have it at Pam's desk. Thank you. The Oakland County Treasurer's Office foreclosure prevention team has come out with the final stretch of the foreclosure prevention efforts. The tax foreclosure deadline for the 2020 or prior years of taxes is March 31, 2023. That means if these taxes aren't paid off by March 31st of this year, or any interested party hasn't entered into a repayment schedule with the Treasurer's Office by then, the property will be foreclosed. Since December of 2022, the Treasurer's Office has conducted over 1,000 taxpayer assistance meetings to assist taxpayers in keeping their properties by working with them to get a repayment schedule and/or by identifying resources that may be beneficial to them in their situation. We are here to help and strongly encourage taxpayers to contact the Treasurer's Office before tax foreclosure deadlines if they have delinquent taxes for the year 2020 or prior taxes. Taxpayers interested in scheduling a taxpayer assistance meeting may call the Oakland County Treasurer's Office at 248-858-0611, or they may visit Some of the resources available to assist taxpayers include the Michigan Homeowners' Assistance Fund, which is a state grant that will cover up to $25,000 for delinquent taxes 2019 and forward, mortgage payments, and utility bills. You must be a primary residence, make less than 150% of the AMI, and prove COVID hardship in order to qualify. Apply at mihaf.michigan.gov. There's also the Financial Empowerment Center in the Treasurer's Office, which provides a one-on-one financial coaching and services to help taxpayers achieve their financial goals. Contact Rita at nafsor@okegov.com, or 248-807-5287. There's also Lake Shore Legal Aid, which provides free legal services to people who are low income and seniors at 1-888-783-8190, and that's the number for new clients. Again, the Oakland County Treasurer's Office assures you that they are there to help and strongly encourage taxpayers to contact the Treasurer's Office if they have delinquent taxes for 2020 or prior tax years. If taxpayers are interested in scheduling a taxpayer assistance meeting, please again, call or visit their website at www.okegov.com/treasurer. Now, I know I gave you a lot of numbers. We will have that available on our website. And if you forget any of these numbers, just call us at City Hall, and we'll point you in the right direction. That's the easiest way to say it. We don't want to foreclose on people because they can't afford to pay their taxes. That's not what we're here to do. We're here to help everybody who has a severe problem and needs some temporary assistance to get by. And that brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. Oh, correspondence. Does anybody have any correspondence to report? Yes?
Yeah, I did receive a letter from a Kathy Tucksbury, who happens to be a resident of Wyandotte, and she is working with one of their council members to revise their dangerous animals ordinance, and they look at ours, looked at ours, and they're very impressed with what we implemented a few, number of years back. And they're looking at adopting our ordinance to their city. So, I thought that was a nice compliment to what we did here.
Yes, we do have a dangerous dog ordinance, dangerous animal ordinance. So, if you are having trouble with a neighboring animal, please feel free to contact us and reach out, and we will assist you in any way possible. Mr. Bridges?
Yes, I just wanted to add, that's an ordinance that you helped shepherd, right, Mr. Bruce?
Correct. Yep, yep.
All right, I recall that, and...
Several years ago.
...notoriety across the region, huh?
Yep, yeah, that's, I think other places have looked at it, yeah. It's been a model.
Thank you.
It has. I did receive a few emails regarding the DTE long power outages and concerns over the last storm with picking up small twigs and the sheer amount of debris that was shaken from trees in neighborhoods. And we responded to them, and we are addressing that as we go. And we want you to be careful because apparently there's another storm on the way. So, seems to come every Friday. So, just beware. Don't try to go to the airport on a Saturday and take off, because you might not get off the ground. Anyway, which now brings us to the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine, administrative, or non-controversial by the City Council, and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item may be removed from the consent agenda for consideration. Mayor Pro Tem, Dr. Bruce, will you read the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number nine, recommended adoption of resolution supporting the grant application to the Michigan Department of Transportation Local Bridge Program for the Tuck Road Bridge Replacement, CMR 3-23-36. Number 10, recommended approval of resolution recognizing Another Way Pregnancy Center as a nonprofit organization operating in the community for the purpose of obtaining a charitable gaming license. Number 11, recommended approval of award of contract for DPW Garage Painting Project to North Star Painting in an amount not to exceed $151,509, CMR 3-23-37. Number 12, recommended approval of award of contract for the Normandy Hills Subdivision Road Reconstruction Project to FH Passion, S.N. Nielsen, and Associates in the amount of $4,578,636, CMR 3-23-38. Number 13, recommended approval of award of bid for police and fire uniforms and related accessories to Alley Brothers in an estimated amount of $128,000 for a two-year period with possible extensions, CMR 3-23-39. Number 14, recommended approval of award of bid for the 2023 As-Needed Guard Rail Repair Program to RDM Holdings in the amount not to exceed $50,000 per year with possible extensions, CMR 3-23-40. Number 15, recommended approval of award of bid for the Sidewalk Replacement Program to Olson Cement Work Incorporated in the amount of $202,150 with possible extensions, CMR 3-23-41. Number 16, recommended approval of City Council Study Session Meeting Minutes of February 27, 2023. And item 17, recommended approval of City Council Regular Session Meeting Minutes of February 27, 2023.
Okay, the consent agenda has been read. Dr. Massey?
Madam Mayor, I would move approval of the consent agenda items nine through 17 as read by the Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, a second. Okay, it's been moved by Dr. Massey, seconded by Councilmember Newland. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll...
I got one question. One question. Sidewalk Replacement Program, this year's program, is it more than dollars spent than last year's program?
I'm sorry.
Sidewalk Replacement Program, is it an increased amount of dollars being targeted in that area there?
Those numbers have usually been pretty consistent over a period of time, so, yeah. So, I don't think it's much more than was last year, if at all.
Again, I know that this is our own discussion, and I'm going to vote for it. But I'd like for us to begin to consider increasing our sidewalk replacement program to connect more sidewalks if we could. I know we have a budget, and that we live within that budget, but I think that's a community benefit that everybody can benefit from, and if we can buy additional dollars to connect more sidewalk, I think it's a great benefit to our community.
We can certainly do that, and as we go through the zoning master plan, I think, just to remind council, we're also doing a non-motorized master plan as well. So, that will help us do even more proactive budgeting for non-motorized circulation in the city and the CIP.
It may be an appropriate time to bring that up also at the budget session coming up in May as well.
I'm sorry.
Maybe being an appropriate time to bring that up at the budget session scheduled in May. Thank you, appreciate that.
For the public at large, we generally go into budget session with the City Manager and Department Heads somewhere around late December, early January. Those numbers are then kind of temporarily finalized. Then they eventually come down to City Council for budget hearings, which are all open meetings. And then we have the passage of the final budget for the upcoming fiscal year, which runs from July 1. This year will run from July 1, 2023, to June 30, 2024, and that's what Mr. Bridges is referring to. So, those meetings that we will have over the budget will be in mid-May, and we'll talk about the allocations then.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Councilmembers Newland?
Yes.
Massey?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
And Mayor Barnett?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, we're on to public questions and comments. If you have anything to say, please limit it to five minutes, unless you're Pam Gerald, and then I'll hold you to three. No, I'm just kidding. But my hand will go up at 30 seconds. I know. Ditto.
Good evening, council. Good evening to the mayor, to the fire chief, police chief, and everybody that's in the council auditorium. You know, I'm a little disappointed with DTE. I don't think that DTE has been good corporate citizens. I think they've done a crummy job in terms of how they have not maintained their infrastructure and their underground wiring. I think that they are to the point where if it's not totally broke, don't fix it. But when it totally breaks, the residents are the ones that are without power, and their outages are very, very delayed. So, I'm going to talk to my Farmington Hills residents and say, if you can afford a generator, get a generator. Don't get a portable generator because they are very dangerous, and if you have them on a wooden deck, they can catch on fire. Get a whole-house generator that works everything in your home during a power outage. Make sure you get an automatic transfer switch on your generator, which means you don't have to light a candle or find a flashlight to go in the basement to flip the switch. It automatically turns on and kicks on when the power goes out. And definitely get a whole-house surge protector. It just makes a difference. When you're having problems with DTE as a customer and as a resident, you have a right to request that DTE puts a voltage monitor on your meter. And what a voltage monitor does, it gives you activity on a report that shows where you're having flickering lights. And a lot of times, the flickering could mean something in the wiring. It could mean something inside of your resident, but it's always good to know. And DTE has got to do a better job with cutting down these trees, you know, that are on these wires. I know people like trees and all of that, and they're great. They provide oxygen and shade and all the things that we know about trees. But in the storms, in the winter, they're very dangerous. On my street, a big tree that's probably 60 or 75 in diameter, it fell across the street, where you could not go up my street a year or so ago. And they had to, the neighbors, get a saw, and you saw like 30 neighbors out there chipping away at this tree just for us to be able to go up and down the street, which is not a bad thing. And all the people that's got natural fireplaces, they had a lot of wood. But it's great, but we have got to just push for DTE to do a lot better, and they don't deserve an increase. I went for probably 15 years up to Lansing to the Michigan Public Service Commission, sometimes being the only person there requesting that they not get a rate increase. And the question that I would ask all of the executives, people are getting by on less money and doing more with an even lesser amount. If you had to take a cut and pay, and you couldn't pay your bills, would that bother you? Or if you couldn't take your family to Paris on vacation, would that bother you? And I was amazed at how many executives said yes. But if it would bother you not to take your family on a vacation, imagine the person that's bothered when they can't pay their bill. They don't deserve an increase. And as a city, I hope you stand behind us in this city and demand that they don't get a pay increase. And if they get a pay increase, we need more of a community benefit from them. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you very much. I didn't even have to raise my hand. You were four minutes, seven seconds, 7.34 seconds. I know, you did well. Next item, anybody else for public questions and comments? Okay. Next is Councilmember Comments and Announcements.
Mayor?
Yes, Dr. Bruce?
I just want to piggyback on what the last speaker talked about with DTE. The Detroit News, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, had a very interesting article in terms of the hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars that they give to legislators on both sides of the aisle in Lansing to block legislation to hold them more accountable. And I think that's a big problem because they are, their equipment's old, their response times are slow. My power was out for two, over two full days in the last storm. We had letters from residents that were up to eight days without power, which is absolutely ridiculous. A year ago, within a two-week period, two separate transformers in my neighborhood exploded, two separate ones, and our power went out. And this was during summertime. It was beautiful weather. There was no storms, nothing, and those transformers just exploded on their own. So, we're talking about a company that is slow, I think, to respond, has an outdated infrastructure. They certainly don't update it enough. And they know how to block being held accountable and being forced to have the equipment and response times and everything else that they should have. And I think we were ranked the fifth worst area in the country for power outages and response times. And there's a reason behind that. And so, you have to look at what they're doing behind the scenes. And we do have to hold them much more accountable in the city and in the state before anything's going to get done. And of course, then, what do they want? They want to raise their rates. They go to the Public Service Commission to try to get their rates increased. And, you know, when people are sitting without power, it's outrageous, and we have to work hard to make them accountable to us. And I think that's going to take everybody's voice to get us there.
Yes. Councilmember Noel?
I'm going to piggyback on the whole power, DTE and power as well. And this is actually more a question for the city. But it was a very good point about trees. And DTE did come through our city last year and did some trimming. But one of the things I've noticed is there's a lot of properties throughout the city that have trees that were planted within a few feet of the power line. So, then DTE comes through, they like take out some of the branches on the side of the power line. In some cases, when it's an evergreen tree, it absolutely looks ridiculous after that. But, you know, that's what happens because the tree was planted too close to the power line. So, my question is for the City Manager, Planning Commission, when they're reviewing site plans and landscaping plans or and city staff, you know, are we making... When they're reviewing site plans and landscaping plans or, and city staff, you know, are we making sure that with new developments? We can't do anything about the existing trees that are already planted, but with new developments, I hope that we're making the recommendation and reviewing these landscaping plans to make sure that these trees are not planted, you know, within 10, 15 feet of the, of the DTE power lines. Because, you know, they may be an eight-foot tree right now when they're planted, but in another 20 years, they won't be anymore. And then we're running into problems and then you get the situation where either the trees or branches fall on the, on, on the DTE lines or they do come through and trim them and, and sometimes they look ridiculous after they're trimmed. Granted, it's necessary, it needs to be done. But, um, you know, the simplest solution is not to plant them there and plant them a little further back or elsewhere on the property. And then the other thing I would say is not just for new properties, but even redevelopment of properties. Um, it might be a good idea if they're just rehabbing the existing building that we also require them to do an inventory of the trees on their property. And if need be, have those businesses go in and cut down those trees and re- and replace them and put them someplace else, new trees someplace else on the property. Because it's, you know, just driving around after the storm damage, I mean, we, we have a lot of old trees in this city. And, and, you know, trees do need to be trimmed. And it's one of those things, no one wants to spend money on trimming a tree. I get it, I, I don't either. It's not fun to spend hundreds of dollars to have a tree trimmed. But when you don't, you get a lot of weakened dead branches on, you know, 50, 60, 70-year-old trees and they fall off during the storm. So, uh, that, I'm making a recommendation to make sure that gets plant, uh, passed on to the planning commission and staff for landscape plans for redevelopment in Farmington Hills.
Mr. Bridges?
Thank you. I, I just wanted just, uh, I want to belabor the point of Councilmember Bruce's comments, well, as Councilmember Noel's comments, I totally agree with. In fact, this last outage, uh, my internet was out for like two days, two days. And, uh, um, and, and we all know that DTE did, um, uh, did a significant amount of tree trimming last year in our city. And so it goes to show you that, uh, that's not the only reason why power outages occur. They occur also because of the lack of investment in the infrastructure. And in fact, um, uh, the, uh, Pam Gerald made a comment in regards to, um, um, regarding the outage as well. And the issue that I'm concerned about was the fact that the outages occur because of the fact there was a lack of investment in our city regarding the infrastructure. And, uh, we, we need to, uh, um, we have very little leeway as council members. All we can do is call them in and talk to them and try to urge them to do what's right for our community. But we need legislative action as well, we need a public service commission to, uh, stress reliability when they are considering rate increases for any utility company. So, um, I know that, uh, as council will continue to, uh, hold DT, DT accountable, but we have limited influence over DTE because of the fact that it's regulated by the PSC. And, uh, local control regarding this issue is, is really not there. And we need to have more local control of this issue. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to weigh in on this too. Um, this power outage was a little different than the one we saw, um, in the summer of 21 in that a lot of the power outages this time were due to, um, stress on the transformers and on the substations. There were two substations in particularly, in particular that were, were very damaged. One was the one at Orchard Lake and Grand River. The other one was in Southfield that serves, um, uh, the south, the, the east part of the city. And it's not just a lack of investment, it's actually de-investment. There's been no, no consideration given to upgrading those transformers and that electrical grid. I also want to point out that when a tree branch goes down on a wire and the wire is out of service and it's sizzling in a backyard, we have to send fire and police personnel to babysit that line. I'm going to ask the city manager the next time that happens, or if we have the details from the last outage, that we send that overtime bill to DTE and to the, um, responsible party so that they reimburse the city. Taxpayers, this should not be borne by you. The cost of making sure that you are safe due to the negligent activity and failure to repair and upgrade the grid by DTE and our utility companies should not be borne by our taxpayers and the people who are suffering from power outages. So I'm going to exact, suggest again that in the month of February and March, we do a look back and all of the lines that were down, that we had to babysit, that that bill gets sent to DTE and see how they respond. I'm curious to find out. Yes?
That would be good legislative action too.
Yes, I, I, I think I will call the, um, birthday girl today, Samantha Stechloff, our state representative, is her birthday today. And, um, I'll let her know.
Please.
Great.
Will do. Um, okay, any other comments on this? I can't wait for you to send the bill to them.
Be happy to.
Thank you. Okay, uh, next on the agenda is city manager update.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Um, as the mayor mentioned earlier this evening, uh, last weekend, we did spring ahead. So that's a good time to remind everyone to certainly check the batteries in your smoke detector and your carbon monoxide monitors, uh, in your home. Um, and it's very, um, timely because, uh, I'm not sure if folks watching know this, but we had a rather, um, large fire in our city over the weekend and in a, in a condominium complex. Um, was a multi-alarm fire with mutual aid from other communities. So I'd like to personally send and also on behalf of city council, a big thank you to our firefighters for their efforts in their response, uh, to this event. And also, um, to our police department that assisted and worked very closely with our fire department in the efforts to evacuate the building. So thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate it. Um, the police department currently has seven unsolved homicides dating back to 1974. The detective session, section, excuse me, has a team of devoted investigators whose mission is to bring justice to these victims and closure to their loved ones. Additionally, the police department also has five open missing persons investigations. By publicizing these cases, the department hopes to develop information on their whereabouts. The public is encouraged to visit our cold case homicide and missing persons website at our city's website at FHGOV.com/coldcases. And of course, you can always call, um, the police department command desk at 248-871-2680 if you have any questions. We're also hiring for summertime, um, for our special services department and probably public services as well. Where's Karen? There you are. We need help. Um, so we need to fill more than 100 positions that are seasonal positions. This one happens to be with the special services department, um, in aquatics, parks, golf facilities, camps, um, guest services, the makerspace, senior services, cultural arts and recreation. Sounds like a lot of fun to me. Uh, pay rates range from $11 to $20 an hour. And we are hosting, uh, a job fair on Sunday, March 12th at 11:00 a.m. at the Farmington Hills Nature Center, which is located at 24915 Farmington Road.
That was yesterday.
Uh, and Monday, March 20th at 5:00 p.m. at the Hawk Community Center, which is the old Harrison High School at 29995 West 12 Mile Road. You can also check our employment page at FHGOV.com/employment. And then one last thing about the yard waste pickup. We are now three weeks from yard waste pickup commencing, three weeks from today. We appreciate our residents' patience, um, and, um, appreciate them holding the debris until our, our, our waste hauler can, uh, resume that service on April 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is unfinished business. Yeah, just because you typed it and gave me math formulas doesn't make it, make it any more fun to read. Consideration of approval of enactment of ordinance C-4-2023 to amend the Farmington Hills Code of Ordinances, Chapter 33, Waters and Sewers, to add Division 2 Stormwater Engineering Design Standards, standards to Article 9 Stormwater Management, to adopt and enact engineering design standards developed by Oakland County Water Resources Commissioner's Office, and approval of summary for publication CMR 3-23-35.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Um, so tonight we're here for the enactment of the ordinance that was introduced last week. Um, as a requirement of the Federal Clean Water Act, the city operates its stormwater management system under a permit from the state of Michigan and the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. This permit requires that the city do what it can to mitigate potential sources of pollution to rivers, lakes and streams. One of the permit requirements is to provide a regulatory mechanism to address stormwater runoff from private and public developments. Recent changes to the state's rules require that we make some updates here to the engineering design standards. Um, in order to ensure consistency of the application of these state rules throughout the development community, the counties of Wayne, Macomb, Oakland and Livingston County, counties all joined together to update these design standards and negotiate the terms and conditions with the state. Uh, this effort occurred over a period of several years with over 40 regional meetings to meet and refine the rules. In late 2021, Oakland County Water Resources Commissioner's Office finalized their standards. And since that time, the city staff has been working with the city attorney's office and the state of Michigan to draft an acceptable ordinance to adopt these new county standards. The rules will apply to any development in the city with a construction area equal to or greater than one acre. It does not include a single-family home that is not part of a larger development. The rules will address items such as improved water quality and stream channel protection. It includes current climate statistics and ensures flood control for large storm events. Adoption of this ordinance will satisfy the state's requirements and ensure continued compliance with the Clean Water Act. Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion? Mr. Bridges?
I have a question.
Can we have a motion first?
Motion, yes. I move the council, I move, I move the approval of the enactment of ordinance C-4-2023 to amend the Farmington Hills Code of Ordinances, Chapter 33, Waters and Sewers, Sewers, to add Division 2 Stormwater Engineering Design Standards to Article 9 Stormwater Management, to adopt and enact, enact, and engineering design standards developed by the Oakland County Water Resource Commissioner's Office, and approval of summary publication CMR 323-35.
Okay, is there a second?
Support.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Bridges, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Bruce. Are there any questions? Yes, Mr. Bridges?
All right, um, it will, will be a grandfather clause in this, would this for new development or just for, uh, will there be grandfather clause in this?
So, good question. We anticipate that these, uh, standards would apply to new projects that come in, you know, from this day forward. So if you already have a PUD plan or a site plan approval that's been through planning commission, they would have the choice to use the standards from, you know, prior to today or the ones going forward.
Excellent. So this will provide some certainty regarding developers, what they, to expect regarding
Correct.
Their development in our, in our, in our city. Okay, that's it, thank you.
Anyone else? Saying no for the questions, this is a roll call vote.
Councilmembers Massey?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Newland?
Yes.
And Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Thank you very much. That brings us now to, um, new business, item number six, consideration of approval of amendment to the city liquor license policy.
I'll start with that one. Um, so the policy before council this evening is a result of, um, amendments that were requested by city council at their last study session. Um, the amendments include, um, the removal of consideration of the proximity of the proposed use to other existing uses. Um, also including, um, requiring food, food service menus, um, if food is served, um, only at that time. And then, um, the main change was removing the requirement that hearings on applications for a license are only held January, May and September. So that they'll be, now they'll be considered as they are submitted. Um, there are also some minor formatting changes and then an update to language as proposed by the city attorney's office.
Okay, any questions? Is there a motion? Oh, um, yes, Mr. Joppick.
Yes, just wanted to add that, um, I don't want any misconception here in terms of this policy because, uh, there is another policy that city council has in place, which is the moratorium on three existing quota licenses. This does not lift the moratorium. I wanted to eliminate any confusion in that regard. This is one of the many things that council wanted to address in the course of that moratorium, the others being the zoning or, or the, uh, uh, master plan and further amendments to the ordinance. So this is just a step process, this is one step in the process.
Okay. Uh, Dr. Bruce?
Thank you, Mayor. I would move the approval of the amendment to the city's liquor license policy as reviewed by the city clerk and city attorney.
Support.
It's been moved by Dr. Bruce, seconded by Councilmember Noel and Councilmember Massey. Um, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Passes unanimously. Next item is the, uh, consideration of approval of setting the budget study session meeting dates of May 15 and May 16, 2023. Mr. Bridges?
I move, uh, Madam Mayor, I move the approval of setting the budget study session meeting dates of May 15, May 16, 2023.
Okay, is there a second? Or, I was going to say, we have to have budget meetings. Moved by Councilmember Bridges, supported by Councilmember Noel. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously. Next is item number eight, consideration of approval of setting a special joint study session meeting with the planning commission and city council for April 20th, 2023. Councilmember Newland?
I'll make a motion to have that, to have the consideration of approval of setting a special joint study sessions meeting with the planning commission and city council for April 20th, 2023.
Is there a second?
Support.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Newland, seconded by Councilmember Massey. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Next is addition, additions to the agenda, attorney's report. You've all received the attorney's report? Any questions? No questions? Next item is closed session, consideration of approval to enter into a closed session to discuss pending litigation in the matter of Hurley versus the City of Farmington Hills et al., case number 22-12408. The council will return to open session immediately following the closed session to take action if needed and to close the meeting. So, um, this is a roll call vote. Do we need a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that we, uh, move into closed session to discuss pending litigation in the matter of Hurley versus City of Farmington Hills et al., case 22-12408.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilmember Noel, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Bruce. This is a roll call vote, any discussion? Seeing none?
Councilmembers Noel?
Yes.
Bridges?
Uh, yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Newland?
Yes.
Massey?
Yes.
And Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Okay, that means we're going into closed session. You can stay in the building, but you can't stay in this room. So we'll call you back in when we go back to regular session. Welcome back to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Farmington Hills City Council for March 13th, 2023. Um, we are back in, um, open session and I believe that, um, Mr. Bridges has, uh, a motion he would like to read.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move to authorize the city attorney and city manager to proceed in the manner discussed and recommended in closed session relative to the case of Hurley versus City of Farmington Hills et al.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Bridges, seconded by Ms. Noel. Any further discussion? Seeing none, is this a roll call vote? Regular, straight-up vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It passes unanimously with one missing. Um, and then we move on to the final item on our agenda, which is always our favorite on a Monday night, the adjournment.
Some move.
Okay. Moved by, um, Mayor Pro Tem Bruce, seconded by Councilmember Massey. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, no, it passes unanimously with one absent. And we will be back next week. Um, not two weeks from now, but next week, um, with a rescheduled meeting from the 27th to the 20th of March at 7:30 p.m. See you all then. Good night, Farmington Hills.